Hey Joe.
Good evening. Hey, got a, got a good beard going there.
Oh, yeah, always did.
Looks.
Looks less in person.
I was gonna say, maybe it's the Zoom.
It's the Zoom and it's the Edison lights.
We'll do it.
Good evening.
I insist upon them throughout the house.
Hi Mike.
Hey guys. To slow things down a bit.
Mike, where are you? You, you are in a different time zone.
Where's that?
You must be in Europe somewhere because it's sunny out there.
It's at the fire station.
Keith, you're feeling good then, huh?
Yeah, I, I came out of it pretty well.
That's good.
My last Friday night.
What'd you have?
I haven't got my results back. I had some, I don't know, either had the flu or had a bad cough or I had the COVID. Maybe the, the new one, the new non-deadly spreadable one.
Yeah, everybody's gonna get that. Everybody's gonna have a little cold.
Yeah, I had a slight fever, ongoing fever, slight headache for about three or four days at the most. A little pain around the shoulders, no real sore throat, but no real lung. Uh, in other times, I would have said I had the flu.
Yeah.
If we are being recorded already.
Okay, well.
It's fine. I couldn't get it out fast enough.
I'm waiting for Walgreens.
There you go.
Yeah.
I hope everybody remembers it's six o'clock for tonight.
Well, I know three of us did.
Rose is here, that's four. Gabe's here.
Your coffee cup magically disappears as you move it. Did you see that Keith? I think you're on mute Keith.
Did I agree? Mike is a witch.
Isn't that a warlock?
I was, I was being the general witchiness of it all. You know.
Hey Rose.
Or like a, one of those guys at the, at the revival tents, right?
Yeah. I've been to the.
You shall live.
I was surprised when we traveled for the disasters and stuff on how many communities down south have the, in the summertime and in the spring, fall, they actually go to the, you know, the tents.
I'll take you one on North Main Street in, in Waterbury.
Oh, really?
Here we go. Joe's brought dinner.
Yeah.
I don't know how to get rid of this.
Joe brings back good memories.
That's pretty funny.
Joe and Mr. Peck, can you hear us?
Hi.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mike. I can hear you very well.
Now you went in to get the hot dogs.
It's a good deal.
I could probably be there in about 25 minutes. Mike, we're gonna have Jim today?
Um, I'm not sure.
Brian?
I'm not sure. We really, for we have just a lot line merger for Falcon 29 or 19 and 23 Falcon on the regular agenda. We have a new topic to bring up, but Jesse's gonna, if you accept that application, I mean, I'll explain that going forward, but if you accept that, which they'd like you to do, as a late application.
Yeah, we, we can see that.
Yeah, and there's nothing really for Brian if he doesn't come on to me.
No, no, I was talking about tonight's workshop.
Oh, I don't know if they're, I don't know who's coming.
Okay, this, this stuff tonight seems it would be helpful if they were here.
Exactly. Yeah, I was hoping that Brian was gonna take the lead.
Cause a lot of this is a.
It's just all engineering now. At least that section, we could, we could go, we could go past that and just go into the remaining things that aren't or engineering oriented. Much of that has not changed. So we'll be able to breeze through that and, and maybe leave that one section to him or go back.
Yeah.
Not much has changed. We, we have, excuse me, the site plan elements as we begin, it's like, you know, like a soft beginning here. The site plan elements are simply a, a, a 21st century upgrade. And we'll, we'll get into that.
All right.
Because all the things that were, are assumed now from somebody to provide on a site plan are extremely spelled out and we'll go up, well, we can probably go over that in an easy, easy manner as well. So I think starting at 10 and moving forward, we'll, we'll do okay. If anybody has any questions, we'll, we'll put those aside. And hopefully we'll get some more people.
Yeah, let's wait another couple of minutes.
I'm texting Brian now. He says, what time? And I said, now.
Be nice to have some more commissioners too. Even if we have a, a, we don't have a, a.
We got three, two, right?
We, yeah. No, three. Three members, four members.
I told Joe, that's right.
Yeah, there we go. Four members. So we have a, we have a quorum. There we go. Okay.
Joe, if you want to just wait a minute or two, I'm trying to get Brian on for us.
Yeah, that's what I figured we'd do.
All right, Brian's coming on now.
There he is.
Hey Rose, did that work out well for you with ZBA?
Yes, I said, did you get my email I sent before I left work?
I saw it come in, I haven't looked at it.
Okay, yeah, I didn't want to send it until after you saw it first.
But you understood that handwritten notes I had for you, right?
Yes.
Brian, can you hear us?
I can, thank you.
You're welcome.
I've been on, Brian. Hello, sorry, wait, I thought it was 6:30 for some reason. My apologies.
Well, we figured, cause we're starting with the site plan, section 10, that maybe you can kind of go over the highlights and, and of what was, not with what was exactly changed, but how we went from there, from the old set of regulations for site plans to the new ones that we've derived here. What is now expected of engineers, what is now expected of surveyors. I figure you, you had a nice handle of that after all these times looking at it.
It's been a little while, but I'll, I'll do my best.
You bet. Thank you.
Right now or are we still waiting for people?
We're, we're still waiting for people.
Okay.
Give another two minutes and we'll open up the, the meeting.
All right, make a cup of tea.
My meeting, pant planning, you can't even open for the dog.
Well, I think we should probably just get going at this point. Whoever shows up will, will just show up. So let's open up with the pledge of allegiance. We've all got a flag in front of you. A pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, individual liberty, justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Happy New Year. Happy, whatever else you celebrate. Okay, why don't we get started with, we, we are all full members here, right? We have nobody to seat.
We need to seat Mr. Canoyer at this point.
Do we? Okay, is he here?
Yes, he is.
Oh, okay. Motion to seat Mr. Canoyer as a, as a commissioner. All right, I'll make a motion to seat him. Anybody want a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Post, so carry. Mr. Canoyer is seated. All right, how do we want to proceed?
Okay, well, we're gonna start where we ended off at section 10. We went a couple pages and then we decided, let's, let's leave it at that because section 10 was rather large and, and needed a little bit of explanation. Let me just give you a little background, a little up to date information. All up to now, all of the changes that have been made, all the suggestions, all of the text, excuse me, the the misspelled words, misspelled numbers, including the one in front of you today with 11.6.1 in the middle of the paragraph. All those have been corrected and after this meeting or once the workshops quote unquote meetings have been finished and we are ready for a public hearing, though that will be distributed back to the, the full amended version will be given back to those our members. So you can review those against any of your changes. If you have even more, you could read it one more time. Give it one more good perusal and then we'll use that document as the final document that's for the public hearing. So as we start on, on my page 47, section 10, 10.1, just going through the as we go through, we'll end up at 10.53. And it up and I could go through this, Brian, but I think, I think it's really based on, there's just, the sections are, are almost subjects. They're all little different in each way. I can point out some of the things that were done at the time being, but as you can see, if you go back forth from the original to, or from the last version to this version, they look highly different.
Yeah, the, the, the old section site plan, I think was three pages long and this one I think is 21. So the major change is that there's just a lot more detail in what we're requiring for people to submit and, and we're also requiring not only what they submit, but who submits it. So a survey should be prepared by a surveyor, a site plan should be prepared by an engineer. Architectural plan should be prepared by an architect, obviously. And then we go into each individual thing, each individual plan and say exactly what needs to be on that plan.
May I, may I interrupt one thing, just to keep the link for our site plans involving commercial projects. This has nothing to do with building a single family.
Oh, did we lose him? Keith, Keith. This is a site plan review. I think that's what he was basically saying. This isn't special permit. This isn't for very minor types of applications. It's for something that is in between, let's just say, a single family home and a shopping center of that, of, of that size. So we can go through a page by page. I don't know if it's really necessary unless you have any specific questions.
Okay, a, a general question, if I can interrupt for a second.
Sure.
In your experience with other towns, would you say that this is more or less specific than other towns' regulations? Do you have?
Um, I would say.
I felt our original, earlier ones were less and, you know, they, they're, like you said, it's like five times more, more stuff. Do you have a sense that if, if there, if this makes them a lot more complicated or demand?
I don't think, I think it's on the high end of average. Upper, upper average. In, in some of the, the larger, more developed towns, this would be below average. They have much, much more detailed regulations. But compared to some of the rural towns, this is tremendously more complicated. So I would say this is not average, but a little bit, little bit over, over average.
Yeah, cause one of the things I, I, we obviously have to do is, is protect ourselves, obviously, but I also, you know, just don't want to make it, and I'm not saying it is, I'm just, I'm asking your opinion. We, we want to make sure it's friendly to people who want to come in and develop. Not, not relaxed, but friendly.
And, and we were cognizant of that. It, it probably looks a little formidable when you first look at it, but the reality is any capable engineer, surveyor, architect, this isn't anything unusual that, that you, we're running into. So I think it's very detailed. It says exactly what you need to put in, which as an engineer, I appreciate. I just want to know what you guys want to see. It's all on there. So we don't have to go back and forth over and over again.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't think it's overly prohibitive for people to, to meet these types of standards. Keith, you look back, you, you look like.
Yeah, I, I, I was dropped, I think there's about 20 people using the internet and the wifi at our house. Yes, these, when you come to these types of direct changes, Joe and commissioners, you, these were taken and you can look these up. There's a, there's a source that we use called the Connecticut Model Zoning Ordinances. Zoning regulations, they were put together through the Connecticut Association of Planning, American Planning Association Association of UConn with the University of Connecticut. They use their interns. It's a very, very large publication with descriptions and pieces of, of submitted excellent work. On the other hand, this was, this is also taken, if you'd look up the, my past employment was with the Town of Old Lime. A number of these regulations and especially the site plan, and this was fortified with some of their information as well. But that was the thing, we had gone through a couple of years of site plans and site plan analysis. And it was, you can even have Jesse testify to this or at least talk about this at another time. Is that, that we expected them to do a lot more than, than the engineers thought they had to do. And, and if you want to know drainage, the garden center, that was kind of lost in, in these kind of wishy washy site plan requirements. So I think what I'd like to just concur with Brian, that we're trying to do what's right by providing a, a real list of, 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 of criteria for those professionals that are going to be doing work in town. And, and as time goes on, this work is going to be more and more, cause with the expansion of the railroad and all the different things that are going on with the new ARP funds and all the different things, infrastructure is going to lead the way, people are going to lead the way and we're going to have a demand for growth in Seymour. So it's good to have these online. Did we end up at a, did you, did you end up at a number or just talking about this from the beginning, Brian?
I was just talking about it. I don't know if we want to go page by page or not, but I mean, there's, there's a lot of detail here of just things to put on a plan that weren't detailed before. And I don't know if it's worth going through it all, but you know, just saying that the existing fences need to be shown on the plan and the existing water supply and the existing wells and, and for whatever reason, sometimes that is not considered to be obvious. It should be, but it, it isn't. So now you have a checklist essentially in your zoning regulations that says this is what it needs to be. And, and there won't be any kind of confusion. But a lot of this, there's a lot of words here that are just standard boilerplate and may apply to some sites, but not apply to others.
I gotta, it just, a couple, a couple of specific questions. On page 49, I assume everybody's on the same page as it's, it's under a subparagraph F. F is location of existing and proposed building and uses as follows. Number three, fences, walls, including retaining walls, including details. Do we need to specify what details or does a professional read that and say, oh yeah, I know what the, I know what the customary level of detail is? That just seems a little vague. Um, it is, I just, I was curious.
I think that's meant vague because a fence could be, fences, I don't think too many people are worried about, although they can be. Retaining walls, on the other hand.
Right.
Have a, have a aesthetic quality. So especially when you get up to six, eight, 10 feet, you might want to know what kind of retaining wall are you putting in? And if you want a six or eight foot retaining or six or eight foot fence, you might want to know what kind of fence it is also. So sometimes a detail is necessary, sometimes it isn't. Perhaps staff can determine or at least leave it open so that the professionals may have to include it if they have to. I think that's, that was the intent of it so that perhaps if we need it, we can ask for it. Keith, is that your, oh, is Keith, oh, Keith's not here. Forget it.
Keith popped out again?
Keith is gone again.
I wonder if he can get in just by phone, use less bandwidth.
He should be able to.
Maybe when he comes back. Um, anybody, I think I have a couple of other specific questions unless somebody else wants to pop in with some. Okay, net case.
You want, you want me to go through page by page like we did before? I'll just skip through it.
Sure.
Is that better? Okay. So I'm gonna start right on, I have page 46. I know Keith had different page numbers, but section 10, the top, 10.1, 10.2, 10.3. From what I remember, that's a lot of boilerplate stuff that we had on the previous regulations. 10.4. Is, is again boilerplate stuff. 10.5 is where we get into what kind of submission is required. So we have an application form and fee. Pretty state, pretty, pretty standard. That wasn't actually said on our previous regulations. So, but everybody knew that they had to do it. 10.5.2 a statement of use. Basically this, this allows you, oh, Keith is back.
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually the people with, with fiber optics are coming tomorrow.
Oh, good. Yeah, the statement of use is something that just, just a, an applicant puts down on paper what they're going to do. And Keith, you may have better knowledge of this, but when they, when they do something different in 18 months, you can go back to that statement and you can say, well, this is exactly what you got approved for. This is what you told me you were gonna do.
Yes, it also allows the understanding of what kinds of things are then necessary in the site plan as we go along. Yes.
So, and, and we, and we got very detailed on what we want to hear in a statement of use. But it's, it's nothing, if, if somebody knows what they want to do, it, it should be relatively simple to put that together. Site plan, this is basically how it should be made, what it should be made on, the size of it, the scale of it. And then we get into the information that is included in the, in the plan. And a lot of this is stuff that 95% of the engineers out there will automatically put on there. But believe it or not, 5% of them don't. So, you know, this is just a checklist for everybody to use so that we can, so that the, the consultants can get this done properly. And that, that's C, D, E, F. These are, this is essentially just a really big, long checklist. And, and not every one of these things may be pertinent to every job. But it, it puts it there for the engineers, the surveyors, the architects to use to make sure that they. But it, it puts it there for the engineers, the surveyors, the architects to use to make sure that they include it. Um. I'm, I'm over on page fifty now, I wasn't gonna go through every little thing on there, but you're welcome to. To look through that and, and, and let us know if you have any specific questions. Uh, sanitary waste disposal plan, um, so. Uh, uh, there's two options, obviously, it's gonna be either the sewer system, or it's gonna be a septic system. Um, if it's a sewer system, it's pretty simple, it's a pipe going to the road. Um, if it's a septic system, it gets a little more complicated, and, and I think that's what, what um, this section is, is meant for. Um, but the health department obviously is, is uh in control of the approval of the uh, the septic system plans. Uh, ten point five point five, page fifty-one is what I'm on. Um, again, that's just in, in case uh there may be any issues with uh the use. In relation to the groundwater. Um, most of the things that get applied for won't have a problem with that, but just in case it does. Uh, this, this is there. Um, again, um, ten point five point six, water supply. If, if it's gonna be a community well, which I think the only area that this would be applied to is. Oh no, it won't even apply to thirty-four, I'm sorry, they have public water. It's gonna be very few areas that might need a community well in town, but just in case something comes up, we have that there. Um, let's see, keep going, we got covenants and restrictions, if there's any easements, associations, anything that. Community um involvement is required, and then we have just a general note for that, architectural plans. Soil erosion, sediment control, I'm, I'm moving down these, this page in case um, you guys aren't following.
It eliminate on ten point five point ten uh coastal areas, cause we don't have it.
Right, we can take that out. But well, and some water courses, we have plenty of. Uh, that would, that would still be considered a water course, believe it or not. That's not coastal.
It's not, it's not a coastal area.
It's just a big water course.
Yeah.
Um, traffic, uh, if, if you have fifty or, or more parking spaces or a certain amount of trips. Obviously, um, they need to put together some sort of traffic report. Um, and then, and then a general, uh, a bunch of other potential additional reports that may be required. Um, depending on, on the use. Let's see.
I, I can uh, I can take over a little bit, Brian is.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, as we get into ten point six is a criteria of how the commission reviews. The um, the material in front of it, what, what basis, what benchmarks do they use? Uh, beginning with general standards. Uh, very, uh, these are all taken from a statutory from the eight point eight, uh, chapter eight of this. On what is the.
I'm having trouble hearing you, are you guys hearing it, having trouble?
Yeah.
I think when you go away from the microphone.
Okay, yeah. Let me try it this way then.
Yeah, that's better.
That sound better?
Yeah.
Um, so this is area that, that the commission should go as they review the application themselves. Uh, let me just take it right from here, uh.
Wait, I'm sorry.
Ten six, uh, ten point six point two.
Got it.
Thank you, fifty-six. Yep, uh, is the option, application complete, does it have all the information that's required? Uh, six point three, compliance with the regulations, do they meet the regulations? Uh, they met the, all the wetlands regulations, including uh, uh, um, all the ones that they need to apply for. Uh, does the development ten point six point four, does the development adhere to the plan of conservation and development? And its strategies, uh, ten point six point five, the neighborhood, the use of the premises, the location. Uh, sh- uh, shall be of character to harmonize and enhance the neighborhood, now we're gonna have to look into that. Because that's some of the new regulate, new statutes that have come in. That say that you can, you cannot use a neighborhood character to base your. Um, to base your decision on a land use decision, so that's something that we need to do, and that's. That's a good byproduct of us talking about it again. Uh, ten points. Yes. Oh, sure.
If I may just go back, the ten, the, the criteria in ten point six point one, those five things, what did they, where did that come from, or four things, where did that come from?
From uh, the uh, generals, uh, from the general statutes, yeah.
Cause one of the things, as I read all this, I started thinking it was, okay, I'm, I'm representing developer, I get a decision I don't like. So what I do is I point to all this stuff and I say, well, show me in the record where the commission considered as it shall. A, the, the indeed, cause it, it's clearly puts a burden on us. To be a lot more careful, now.
Yes.
We're making a finding, I think, it's a big difference for making a finding. Consider, I don't know whether, I haven't written any of the cases to know whether that means, oh yeah, I was thinking about that at the time, I just didn't say anything, is that considering? Maybe it is, I don't know, but.
I would think that if, if the examples that show the consideration are put on record, such as.
Somebody asks a question.
Let me ask a question, uh, a, a report talks about the um, the historic nature of the. Of the, or the uh, the fragile environment that needs to be. Uh, adhered to by doing a different kind of septic system, uh, thinkings like that, I think that would be part of that.
Yeah, cause I think this clearly makes it, I mean, like I said, my first impression was, okay. We are gonna have to be more careful, we're gonna have to make sure that we have, or we should be, cause you know, you give a, give a plant's lawyer an inch. And they'll, they'll open it up to a, to, to a mile, uh, with, with something like that. Um, and then, you know, it's, it's not, it's just not a stretch to say, well, if nobody asked a question or it didn't come up. Which one of these, must they have considered, and how can you judge, so I, um. So we do have to use the word shall right at the top there, the commission shall, or can we say the, the commission may? And if we said may.
Um. What other communities have done, let me look that up and, and, and put that as something to look out for.
I'm sorry, could you say that again, I, I missed that.
I was just gonna say, I'm gonna highlight that, so we could look at, uh, look on, onto that and see what, what uh. If there's anything what you're saying that, that uh, that equals that, you know?
Yeah, because, I mean, the only people complain about that change would be, if we go to a public hearing, there are a bunch of developer attorneys out there, and they go, wait a second. We wanna make sure we can hold you to your, to your regs, so we, we want you to put shall in there, but if we put may in there. It, it, I think it keeps, makes, makes our, it, it takes a little bit of the burden of having to make a, you know, a, a more complete record than I think. We really need to.
And, and there might be a difference between the may and the shall, if we're looking at a site plan versus a special permit.
Clearly, right, yeah.
You know, one might, one might apply to the other, or vice versa.
Yeah, sometimes you have to make a finding, and that's different, I, that, that raises the bar substantially for us, but um. Then I wanna, if I could, one more question on ten point six point three.
Yes.
What ha- what happens, this is kind of more and more of a parenthetical, but what, what happens when ZBA goes and does something that we just hate and we know is wrong? How, how do we get past that without?
You'll appeal their decision. You would, you would appeal their decision.
We, we could, oh, we have the power to appeal their decision.
I, I've, I've worked in a community where the planning commission appealed a decision. Uh, based on an overstate, uh, an overuse of a zone by the ZBA. The ZBA approved that in Southington, you needed two times the amount of land, make an interior lot. I don't know what happened to that case, but what happened was the ZBA cut it in half. To a half an acre, and the ZB, and the planning commission appealed that decision, saying that they were actually rezoning the property.
Yeah, okay, so do you, I guess you watch that, they haven't done anything that's been so bizarre that we would consider ma- making an appeal?
As far as yet.
Okay, so we got that to look forward to. I could see how it would happen, I. So, okay.
Did you watch last week, last week's meeting?
No, no. No.
Say.
They've got a hard job, I, I think their job's harder than ours, frankly.
Maybe at the end of the day. So these are, these are taken, these are taken from the various, uh, again. These are, these are the, the level of what you would make your decision on. Uh, these are also the level of which we would do our um, provide our reporting. Provide our benchmarks for, for which you will hit. Um, much like when uh, an application comes before a wetlands commission and becomes. A regular application to one that has significant activities. At that point, new things are needed, new maps are needed, new bits of information are needed. And uh, and, and, and a hot, a stricter level of scrutiny as well.
Yeah.
So as we go along, we're into uh, uh, we, we look at some trees, uh, disabled persons. Uh, parking and loading, um, storm drainage. Um, as we get to ten point six point one three, utilities. Uh, fourteen emergency services, outside storage, uh, ground coverage, which is back in section five. Uh, landscaping, which will have its own, uh, ver- uh, it has its own section as well. For the particular types in a particular uh landscaping needs. Um, this is mostly for parking. Um, signs, uh, natural features, uh, if there's a uh. I don't know, beautiful, I don't know, what would say, beautiful trees, uh, landscape, uh. Manmade features. Archaea- archite- archaeology sites, unusual landscaping vistas, different views, all kinds of things that would work on this. Excuse me, uh, archaeological sites, uh, E and S control, service, ground protection. Um, and we go back up through uh preliminary consideration. And, and application and fees, up until ten point nine, when we talk about. Uh, the review, so when the review is received, when we see the zoning commission review the application. May consult with the applicant and consider uh, uh, the sufficiency of the completion of the. Of the plan, so there is some call to allow for uh, somebody to have that assessed. Um, we're in page sixty-five, uh, notices mandated by statute. Uh, we come down to sixty-six, uh, right now, we do not require it, but uh, this will require a, a sign placed in front of a. During his schedule for a site plan, uh, it's not required, but usually done. Sign will be posted in front of the property detailing when that public hearing will uh commence, that has not been done. In the town for, for none of the public hearings, and we've taken all of them, and you'll see it's been, it will be done at, at the ZBA level as well. Uh, we talk about uh, the family of the site plan, and that is all done through state statute. Uh, how they have to file it, uh, if necessary, uh, as one of the conditions, uh, they would have to play, post a, a completion bond. Um, and um, and the two major changes are two changes, uh, that would involve changes. Are, are, uh, we never had a section that if a. Uh, if a site plan came back in a couple of years and needed to expand, needed to contract, needed to change. Uh, we didn't have any other way but to send them back through the original process. This allows for the zoning officer, uh, and the building official to uh commence. And uh, think about what those changes are, and either do them in-house as an administrative uh, approval or, or send them back to the committee.
Keith, can I ask a question to go back to?
I'm going fast, so. If you wanna, yeah.
Real, real quick back to uh, six, page sixty-five, uh, ten eleven, action notice. Um, it's about halfway down. In that paragraph, the commission may approve any application subject to certain stipulations and or conditions. As it be as necessary for the purpose of preventing or diminishing any non-compliance with the criteria set forth in this section ten. Well, I think section ten is, that seems kind of redundant, like, yeah, of course, well, I mean, section ten is there, and you don't even need. To have a stipulation that they'll follow the rules, but what, what, what started me thinking about?
Yes.
Do we need, should we have, you know, a provision? And is it enforceable, I think, I, I think it is largely, where we can make stipulations about other things, things that are not normally. Within, within our purview, uh, is there any reason why we can't do that? In other words, not something that's in the regulations, we wanna, may wanna stipulate, now, you know, some laws say you can't, you can't, like, for example, the new stuff with. Uh, in-law apartment says you can't make any condition about certain things, but, but we could. Is there any reason why we couldn't include language that allows us to put pretty much any condition that the. That the applicant is willing to go along with, I know I, I, we did it once with um, can't remember what it was, but I just threw it out there as a question, he said, yes. We did it, and it was made a condition, is uh, is there a reason, any reason why we couldn't put that in the regs?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna see that, but, but it. Jim, Brian, you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think, I think a condition, you know, by the commission is always set forth. Upon your approval of an application, so I, I don't, I don't really think it has to be in the regulation. Because you're setting a condition um, that would follow, you know, what you're approving, and you know. Say, say you want to, and. Joe, are you thinking about something more along the lines of a site plan, or are you thinking more along of uh?
Well, here's, here's what.
Something that's actually a uh permitted use.
He- here's what made me think of a question, I read that sentence, and what that really says is. Um, we can put a condition on something, but that condition would only be, oh, by the way, the condition is that you follow the rules that you already read earlier. In other words, that's a meaningless statement, that, as written right there, it doesn't add anything at all.
Right.
What would add something would be is if we could put conditions on an approval, after we've heard. The whole application, maybe even, and, and we've done it, we've done it a few times in the past, in conversation with the applicant, saying, well, would you be willing to do this? We'd look on it fair, favorably if you would, and then put a, a, a condition, and we've done it, so my question is. Uh, I know Keith just said he didn't think it was a good idea to have that in the regs. I guess, I mean, I, I.
I think, I would like to hear. Conditions of the commission will always stand, because they usually are, are a, address a certain concern.
Right.
Um, whether it's a site plan or whether it's a permitted use, um, even on a permitted use. Um, there could be a condition of um, you know, um. Of signage or something like that, I, I think you always reserve the right to have that no matter what, Joe.
Alright, okay.
I, 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 I see your point, but um, I think that, that's kind of a given, that the commission always has the ability to. Uh, modify or um, or place conditions. So, I mean, we could drill down on it further though, Joe, I mean, we certainly could. Look at it and drill down on it and see if we can tweak any of the language.
Cause the, the time that I was thinking about, we did it before, we asked, I mean, I asked the question, I said, would you be willing to this if we that? They said yes, so we had agreement, that's a little different from us coming back. You know, unilaterally and saying, you're approved, but A, B, C, and D.
Well, let, let's just bring it back to something really easy, let's bring it back to uh, uh, signs. Something that's really easy, that you guys deal with it all the time, animated signs. You could say, okay, the animated signs are permitted and everything else, but you are actually, you say, you know what? We, we want the duration of that sign, you know, and I think we have some language in there. You, we want that duration of the sign, you know, based on the location on Route sixty-seven to, you know, only change. You know, every two minutes or something like that, and you set forth that condition. Well, you're not really denying the, the, the intent, because we allow those, but you're setting that commission, uh, condition based on. Um, you know, the uh, where the sign is, maybe how high, high it is. So, I thi- I think, I think we're covered with that, but like I said.
I think so too, but I think, I, I guess a better example would be, okay, you're approved. Provided you fix the thing you messed up on the other application five years ago, that we've been asking you to fix and you haven't fixed. I think maybe that's a better example, but I'm.
Well, if, if, if they never met a condition, or you had a site plan that was in any violation, you probably could have reason just for denial. So, you know, we're not gonna prove it.
Because there's currently a.
Yeah, I think, I think that would, that would hold up, it's like, hey, you guys screwed this up, you never met these conditions or whatever you have, or you have a problem. So therefore, you know, moving forward, you have no application, you actually have no basis of approval for us to approve it.
Well, no, I'm talking about a separate application, they, they, this applicant.
Yeah.
Approved, subject to his, to the condition that we place on.
Yeah.
That he cleaned up a different site, different place, different application, other side of town. That's an extreme example of a condition that I'm thinking about. Because the ones we've been talking about are either addressed in the regs to somewhat, to some extent, in which case we don't need to put a condition that they follow the regs. The regs are incorporated within the whole intent. And purpose of the regs is that if there is a condition that if you don't follow them, you don't get what you want. I'm thinking about something completely outside, something we really wanted from this developer elsewhere, say.
Well, you were usually always site specific, so that might be rough.
Yeah, okay, I just just curious. I don't think I don't think I've seen in Seymour, I don't think I've seen any time when that would have been helpful. Anyway.
Well.
I did see it in Monroe, that's.
Yeah.
All right, just curious. Just curious.
Keith, not just on a side note. Yes, I know that we've been discussing, I know I don't want to interrupt the the flow that, you know, the way you're presenting. But I just want to throw it out there that, you know, there are some things that state ruled on and there's some some new language and everything else that we're going to be taking a look at, probably bring into you guys in a little while. We want to get a pulse on the administration right now, our current administration and how, you know, they see the town. But there are a few things that the state legislation did, so. Mike and Keith and myself are working on that, so we're gonna. We're gonna be throwing that in a little later, but.
Accessory apartments?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, exactly. So but we want to, we want to get a pulse on, you know, the administration, how they view it before we. You know. Just so we can come back and say, hey, look, you know, that's why the administration may be looking at it. But ultimately, it will be your your commission's decision.
You mean, like, we're thinking that you think people might want to opt out?
Opt out.
Because if they, because they, we would not control that if if we, let's say, let's say we did not want to, let's say we did not want to opt out. Well, no, I guess that would that would trump whatever any other board.
Yeah, so I'm just bringing it up. I am, you know, like you said. But keep it, Mike and myself been looking at it. I just wanted to throw in it. It just popped in my head again. It's like, I don't want to throw Keith off, but there there is a little bit more stuff and obviously the states behind it, so for every audience city, so.
I read that public act, that's so, there's a lot of, there's a lot of good stuff in there.
Yeah, something.
We did look at, we're, I think we're going to change on the fly, though, the section that has to do with character that can be removed from the site plan and special permit section. And we we identified one of those just now. We might want to do that at this point. If not, we can save that to another time. As we went along, we're at the end of section ten. Are there any other questions that have to do with site plans?
One technical question on page sixty six, eleven, a ten dash twelve, ten dot twelve dot one. Upon receipt of the copy of site plan, and it says completion, but the chairman, vice chairman or secretary shall endorse. That mean only because we usually have two signatures on that. This sounds like it could be one signature of any of those people. Is that what you intended? Or does it have to be the chairman, vice chairman plus this?
We could.
Keith, you're dropping out, Keith.
Oh, I was going to say, if you want to have it as this as a two signature. Standard, we can change that. If not, this was just to when someone couldn't find either of the three people. It's allows.
All right, that's fine. I didn't, I don't think it makes a difference, right?
No, as long as, as long as each of those, each of those persons know the exact conditions and know what needs to be done before those signatures are placed, that shouldn't be any problem. Now we're at special permits. Special permits have really stayed about the same as they were before. They were pretty good. We did place within the, as we go along, the, these are all things that that. As as an overall umbrella, the to review special permits. And the new thing is we have is is because special permits are required to have to go before the commission for a public hearing. We've put in a new noticing requirements for those special permits. And these are, begins the section begins with those which are general regulations, which really are the first page. The regulations for the noticing. And then the reiteration that these special permit requirements are not only for the ones that are identified in the table of permitted uses under the special permit. Identification mark, but then we got start getting into the specific special permit land uses that have been placed in our regulations for the last twenty years. None of these have been changed, only the reference numbers and the when it said you had to go back to six because six became five, four became three and it got all pushed around. But essentially, these are all the same, beginning with the phase developments. I'm just going to go over the the whole section and then we'll go back. Garden apartments. Townhouses, specialized housing for the elderly. Three and four family homes, affordable housing zones. These are now all part of the requirements. And we start with garden apartments. You'll see ten eleven point three is townhouses. And these are all the specific regulations that were needed from the original plan, original regulations, townhouses. Specialized housing for the elderly. Kind of an old term, I guess. Three and four family dwellings. We have the new eleven point six affordable housing zone. And as reported before, these are reported back in that original section that had the the zones themselves. This is which is the Bladen's Ridge. One, excuse me. We go through there, there's quite a lengthy regulation, and then we get into. Okay, yep.
Keith, for one question on that. Will that section, will that section cover the state mandate of what we need to do for the Affordable Housing Act?
No.
No, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to.
It's another plan. Yeah, we have to write a plan to create the affordable housing plan. It's due next June. June of twenty three, excuse me, this coming up June, right, June of twenty two, right, seventeen fifteen.
June of twenty two that we have to have an adopted plan.
After in after February first, the cog will be coming out with a an affordable housing handbook of sorts, a toolkit to use and an ability for a town to create their own affordable housing plan based on a on some levels of what participation the town wants to do. It could be a simple statement that's thrown into the plan of conservation development and or a precipitatory plan boosting citizen participation. It could identify those areas that affordable housing could be made, et cetera, et cetera. But those are, this does not take care of that.
Okay.
This just provides what we do.
Let me ask you, is that something that that this commission here is going to need to really consider, or is that something that's going to be done at a different level or or where do you see that falling? That's my question.
I see that falling at the local level. I see that falling with within the next two or three weeks, we get all the information and all the good work that Savannah Nicole had done for the for the region. We are already contracted with the with Thomasin and Wolkett to help them write their affordable housing plans, so the cog will be meeting that challenge and working with Seymour to 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 have that done by its expiration date.
But but where is it in, where is it inserted? Is it something that the selectmen are going to take care of and approve, or is it something this commission is going to need to adopt?
It can be either approved by the selectman and or the or the planning and zoning commission. It can be approved by either of them or both.
Okay, yeah, all right. Not that I want to, not that I want to throw more into this this process, but again, these things from the state are are coming out and we find ourselves, you know, you know, doing what we're supposed to be doing with our zoning regs and then you know, it we keep getting these updates as, oh, you deal with this, deal with that. So, okay. Again, I'll be speaking with Anne Murray and finding out. Again, you know, getting their their information, getting information to them and actually getting the board of selectmen to put this on their radar as well.
Exactly. Exactly. So we go through and then there's the new section that was developed that was passed right when I had gotten here sometime about two thousand nineteen called the conservation and energy efficient community. And that takes us up to page eighty six. Eighty six is an explanation of the floodplain district. It it it's aware that where the firm, the flood insurance rate maps. Where it's referenced. And which gives us the ability to to have a floodplain application and a review. You have any thoughts about that, Ryan, as we wind down our meeting?
I don't remember. This this didn't really change from the last previous version, right?
No, it just some of the references to the actual mapping, we had a flood insurance map. It's actually a. Yeah, we've changed it some a few of the terms.
I mean, this is, this is governed under the floodplain regulations that come down from the state anyway. Exactly. So I think it just it mimics that.
Yep. I maybe we should stop right now. And
we're just.
Page eighty eight, earth excavation. There's some changes in that that we've added.
Yeah, that did change a little bit. It's a good place to stop.
What do you think? Hopefully, we finish this up in person at our next meeting.
Think we'll be in person.
I'm hoping for a while.
No, no.
I don't know.
Okay.
All right. Well, I guess we can. We don't need to have a motion to adjourn this meeting, do we?
Keith, what's the?
Yes, sir.
What what's what's the? I'd like to get a timeline on when we think we're going to be, just so I can.
Okay.
You know, keep this so I can report to the, you know, the powers that may be, but when you, when you think we could actually implement these regulations once we punch them out?
Well, we'd have to have a, we're going to have to send them to the, we might want to send them right now to our town attorney. With the changes we've made and and the and give them a copy, heads up copy. We can finish this up at the next meeting. Or have the finish this up face to face at the next meeting and set a public hearing for the following meeting, so a public hearing for March.
Joe, Joe, what 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 do you and the other members think about timeframe for public hearing? When do you, when do you guys feel comfortable to to set up public hearings?
Well, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I, you know, I think once council has looked at it. I mean, we should probably just try to do it in the very next meeting. I think I think we understand as much as we need to about what's what's substantively in the regs.
I mean, I'm I'm think I'm thinking April, guys, what I'm thinking April, right? You know, like, we get through Jan, we're in January, February, March. And then then we bring this to the public for April. And if we have to carry it over to May, that brings us to, you know, a June, July type of adoption. Does anybody have any?
Let's shoot for April then.
Hey, it's fine. Does that sound like a good compromise?
Joe?
Sure.
Al's hot dog stand will be open by then.
Yeah.
Richard, you okay with that? Think about it.
I can't guarantee, I can't guarantee anything in April and May. I may be traveling out of the country.
Okay, okay. So who else we have? Dave, Dave, you good? Everybody good with that?
Joe, you in there?
Yes, that'd be fine with me.
Okay. Like, all right, is that, you know, at that point there, that's where we're going to, I I I know already that we've had some people in the office and everything else. This is you know, I don't know how much comment we're going to get, but I know that we're going to be, the public's going to want to weigh in on this. Everybody's worried about it.
Good.
All right, why don't we close this down and then we'll take five and are we, what are we doing? Are we just letting this this recording roll? Is that the way it's happening and we're going to go right into the other meeting or is it a separate sign and separate Zoom call?
No, we're going to let this one roll right through.
All right. Why don't we take four, four to five minutes and unless everybody just wants to keep road right right on going, go right into the regular meeting?
I'm okay either way.
Yeah, either way with me.
All right, why don't we keep going? All right, in that case, let's open up regular meeting for tonight. We've already done the pledge of allegiance, alternates are seated, so why don't we move into any correspondence that we have? None? Oh, you're, I think you're muted muted.
Can you hear me now?
Much better.
Mr. Chairman, we have a late application for Stables Auto Body. They zoning board of appeals was unable to meet for the last three months. They finally were able to get through a variance approval. And a location approval last week. The applicant is being represented by Mr. Judson. He'd like, when you get into accepting applications to at least accept the application, we have it on file. As a late application, he'd like to give you an overview of that. And then go from, and then you can, we'll send the packet out for you for next month.
Okay, that sounds good. Do we want to roll right into that now or do we want to put that? Is that, that's not on one of the other agenda items, is it? It's not, right? Mike?
You would be up to my report at this point, sir.
I'm sorry, say that again.
You would be up to my report at this point.
Okay, that sounds good. Okay, go ahead. Let's move to Z O. Any other correspondence? Not go to Z O report.
Good evening, gentlemen. Mike Margievsky, the CEO for the town of Seymour. Just to give you a heads up on Bladen's Ridge. Staff will be meeting with them next week to discuss how they're going to proceed with their plan, hopefully for the end of the month, the beginning of February. They're hoping to finally get in there and to further break ground and start moving with that project. The Day Street Dam has just been about completed at this point. They should be out of there within a couple of weeks. That project for them moved relatively well. The, there was litigation. On that it came across to the inland wetlands commission. In involving them and there was a cease and desist order that was put out by the previous zoning enforcement officer. That cases was settled between the parties. And there was no further action on the part of the town other than the initial deposition that I gave on behalf of IWC and PZC. So that litigation is now at this point a mute point according to counsel. Last month, last week, zoning board of appeals denied a variance request for a three foot extension to our garage after the fact. There was no really hardship there and it was good to see that ZBA upheld that decision. And again, this evening, you have that. Um, and again, uh, this evening you have that, um, one extension. I'll take any questions if anybody has anything.
So what happened with this, that, uh, Z B A, you run the file again?
So we had a gentleman on South Main Street who started excavating to create a larger driveway in the hillside of his property. Um, in addition to removing less than fifty cubic yards, transporting it across the street onto his neighbor's yard. Um, and there was calls made into that there was excavation and the roads were filthy upon going out um, to find out what was going on. It was also noted that, um, work had been done to, um, a garage that had no zoning approval, um, and or building permit. So, um, the naivety of the, of the, um, the owner, um, requested that he would allow to go for, uh, to see if he could get a variance, uh, for the addition of the garage. He remediated the excavation, um, of both properties um, and then subsequently submitted the application to get an approval of a variance after the fact. Um, and Z B A denied that, um, that, that application.
Gotcha, alright, thanks.
We, we have quite a few, um, um, situations right now, um, that, uh, are requiring Mike to, uh, get out there and enforce the regulations. We, we have a couple of, uh, you know, encroachments that we're dealing with. Um, we've got a, we've, we've got a little bit more than normal right now. Like Mike said, we like to give the applicants an opportunity to say, hey, if you wanna try to get a variance, but some of these things are so egregious that they're just violations and um, like I said, thank, uh, thankfully, um, you know, a couple of the board members on C B A stood up for and, uh, upheld Mike's, uh, decision, so. Sometimes it gets a little crazy out there, but right now, I don't know what it is, maybe the pandemic, but everybody's, everybody's a little crazy right now. So, job's a little rough.
Alright, anything else, Mike?
Uh, Mister Chairman, just to, uh, make you aware, Mister Van Hagen has just joined us.
Mister Van, and Mister Van Hagen's first name is?
Robert.
Robert, okay.
Yeah, sorry about that. My computer decided it needed to reboot right before the meeting.
That's a, that's, that's one handsome picture there, Mister Van Hagen. I gotta tell you, I gotta give you that.
I kinda wanna keep it up. I don't want you to see what I really look like anymore.
Yeah, wow, that's a, that's, that's a glamour shot, I think.
Sorry.
Still, oh, there he is. Good to meet you.
How we doing?
Alright, in that case, uh, anything else, Mike, or should we move on, or?
Um, you have an applicant, I believe we're up to.
You wanna do your, uh?
Public comment, sir.
Yeah, what, did you wanna do Jesse's, uh?
I have a question. Who's, who's the telephone on there, that two oh three eight one nine? Who is that person?
Hi there, Voices Newspaper here.
Oh, okay, thank you. I just wanted to write it for my notes.
Alright, um, did we wanna, did, did Jesse wanna talk to us about that, uh, his thing, or?
I, I believe it's on the agenda as item number ten, at least the copy that I have.
Oh, that is F seven forty-six, seven fifty?
Yeah.
Okay.
I realized I didn't, we put it on. We got it on.
I guess I could have read it and figured that out.
But we have the application in him.
In that case, let's move to number six, public. We'll move then to pub, uh, item number six, public comment. Any comment from the public? Anybody out there? Alright, let's move forward to number seven, then approval of the zoning regulations workshop, December ninth, the minutes, I assume that means. Everybody a chance to look at, you get a motion to approve them?
So moved.
We have a second? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, uh, then number eight, approval of the regular, approval of the regular meeting minutes for December nine. Any comments, changes, et cetera, to those? Not, can entertain a motion to, to approve them?
So moved.
And we have a second? That joke, yeah, okay, uh, alright, all in favor? Any opposed? So carried? Okay, number nine, nineteen and twenty-three Falcon Drive Lot Line Revision.
Alright, uh, good evening. For the record, Jesse Judson, Licensed Land Surveyor, fifty-two Main Street, Seymour, Connecticut, representing the applicants, um, for Lot Line Revision, who are the Vicki Domino family who was at nineteen Falcon Drive and the Jones family that lives at number twenty-three Falcon Drive. Uh, these lots were created back in nineteen eighty-seven as part of the Greenlee, the state subdivision. Um, that subdivision was approved by the zoning commission and since we're revising the lot lines between them, we need to come back in front of you for approval. Um, the homes were built shortly after the subdivision approval in the late nineteen eighty. Uh, both lots are located within the R forty zoning district. Uh, both lots far exceed the, the area requirements of the R forty zoning district. Number nineteen is roughly one point six acres and number twenty-three is a little over two acres. Uh, last summer, the Vic Dominos had their property line surveyed and discovered their shed was, was partially located on uh, the property of number twenty-three Falcon Drive. Uh, the sheds existed in this location for close to thirty years and they were unaware of this encroachment until they had surveyed. Uh, the Jones family, number twenty-three Falcon Drive, has agreed to sell the, uh, Vicki Domino's uh, triangular piece of land, roughly nineteen hundred square feet, that will, uh, correct the problem and, uh, therefore make the shed on Vicki Domino's property at nineteen Falcon Drive. Uh, the existing area, again, at number twenty-three Falcon Drive is ninety thousand two hundred fifty-seven square feet. After the revision, it will still be eighty-eight thousand three hundred eighty-one square feet or two point zero three acres. Um, far exceeds the lottery requirements. Um, the house at number twenty-three Falcon Drive is located approximately a hundred eighty-eight feet from this proposed property line revision. And there's no improvements within close proximity of it, and and after the revision, both lots will conform to the zoning regulations still. It's pretty straightforward. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Commissioners, anybody have any question? Staff, you guys have any comments? Anybody see any reason why we shouldn't go through, uh, go through with this one?
I've reviewed the, I've reviewed the plan. There's nothing that we need to worry about.
Okay.
Yes, see, that was all, all, um, part of the, uh, I know there was an in-ground pool put in. Is that all part of that, uh, that project?
This is a different lot than Vic and, this is, uh, his father's lot. On Falcon Drive, you're thinking of Fawn Hollow.
Oh, right, 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 okay.
So after that other incident with the other Vicki Domino family member, this, that's what, uh, triggered this one to have their land surveyed and then they found the problem with the shed, so they're trying to, uh, correct it all now, so they don't run into problems in the future.
Okay, so, so it's kind of a family matter, okay?
Well, it's, I guess the other circumstance, which I'm not really aware of, uh, raised, uh,
Okay.
You know, some concerns, so they wanted to make sure everything was good here and then found this problem. They wanna fix it, so there's no problems down the road.
Okay, thanks for clarification.
Sure.
Alright, in that case, um, we'll entertain a motion to approve the Lot Line Revision, unless there's anything else we need to do first?
If whoever makes the motion, please identify themselves for rows.
Anybody?
I moved to approve the Lot Line Revision.
Okay, good. Do we have a second?
Second by Rob, any?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Hearing none, so carried. Thank you, we're all set. Alright, number ten then, seven forty-six, seven fifty Derby Avenue.
Alright, again, Jesse Judson, Licensed Land Surveyor, fifty-two Main Street, Seymour, Connecticut, representing the applicant, Sable Auto Body for their application for site plan approval at seven forty-six, seven fifty Derby Avenue. Um, I'm gonna see if I can share my screen here.
You should be able to just.
Let's see, can you guys see the map up there now?
It's there now.
Alright, so, uh, this is the existing site conditions. I tried calling it up so you guys could under, see a little better. Uh, my apologies for the late application. I understand you didn't get the packets, but, um, so, present conditions. Uh, Sable Auto Body operates out of seven forty-six, seven forty-eight Derby Avenue. Uh, it's been there since nineteen forty-seven. Uh, this parcel's roughly an acre in size and that's the, uh, larger brown building, uh, towards the upper right portion of the, the map here. Um, also part of this application, uh, to the south of that, to the bottom of the screen is number seven fifty Derby Avenue. Uh, presently, that building is vacant. In the past, it used to be a, a local heating and, uh, A C contractor that occupied that space. Um, the parent company, Sable Auto Body, owns both of these parcels. Um, so, present conditions, uh, currently customers park along the front of this building. The front portion of this property is this one big wide expansive driveway. Customers park in front of this building and back out on the Derby Avenue. It's, it's really sort of an unsafe situation. Um, but, but that's how it existed for a long time. Um, to the northerly, to the north of the existing building, there's a driveway that comes in. Uh, vehicles for repair are stored to the rear of the building. Um, back there, there's also a metal shed that's used for part storage. So over the years, uh, there was various additions added to the building at seven forty-six, seven forty-eight. Um, you can see to the left of the building, they jog off the rear of the building and one of the additions, uh, which used to be a, a sign shop, actually extends over the property line on to seven fifty Derby Avenue. So the first part of our plan here is to, uh, formally merge these two properties together that will get rid of some of the, um, will get rid of a lot of the, uh, zoning, I'll say, bio, setback, uh, setbacks that don't, uh, currently meet the regulations. So there's also an existing driveway that comes in between the two buildings and then there's a gravel parking area located at the southwest, uh, portion of the property. So the applicant is proposing a complete renovation of the site. Um, we're gonna, uh, facelifts of the buildings and new parking areas. I'm just gonna try to switch over to my proposed plan here. And let's see, should be a different map up that you guys can see now?
You are correct.
Okay, so this is our proposed site plan. What we're proposing, first off, all the additions off the rear of seven forty-six, seven forty are gonna be removed. Um, the shed behind the building is gonna be removed and its area is gonna be replaced with a hundred and seven foot by fifty foot, uh, metal building addition. It'll be located behind the existing building. Um, it's not really adding a, a lot of square footage, really only up in the, the building square footage by eighteen hundred square feet, but it's gonna be laid out in a much more practical manner for the, uh, the shop to function smooth, more smoothly. Um, also, the small addition off the rear of number seven fifty is gonna be removed and, uh, the garage door will be installed to the, uh, backside of seven fifty and seven fifty will now be utilized also for a repair area. Um, as far as site improvements, uh, one of the major improvements is the customer parking is gonna be relocated along the southerly property line. Um, that's gonna allow portions of the existing driveway along Derby Avenue to be removed. Um, that will also allow us to establish some lawn, the area between the edge of the road and the property line uh, will become a lawn area and in front of seven forty-six to seven forty-eight, uh, there's gonna be landscape beds and a concrete walkway installed in a flagpole. Uh, additionally, as far as landscaping, along the whole southerly property line is gonna be landscaped as long as as well as along a southerly portion of the proposed building addition. Um, also along the southerly property line, presently, there's a real old, uh, dilapidated channeling fence that's gonna be removed. A new, uh, channeling fence is gonna be installed with privacy slats along there as well. Um, additionally, for improvements, at the southwest corner of the property, there's gonna be a screen dumpster enclosure. The driveway is gonna be paved in the area behind the building, the proposed addition is gonna be paved, which will allow a circular driveway. Uh, the northerly entrance is gonna be just for deliveries and employees in jockeying vehicles around during the day. So a delivery vehicle could come in the north entrance, circle around the back of the building and go out the southerly entrance and, and not have to do any crazy maneuvers. Most of the delivery vehicles to the site are small, uh, box trucks or vans that are just delivering parts to the facility. Obviously, sometimes cars come in on, on tow trucks or wreckers, but, uh, that, that's really the largest vehicles that come in and out. Um, so the employee parking area is gonna be relocated to a new paved area, um, at the southwest corner of the site behind the proposed addition. The northwest, behind the northwest portion of the addition is currently where vehicles are stored and that's gonna remain the same. Uh, the vehicles for repair are gonna be stored in that area. Um, other site improvements include, uh, we're gonna update the drainage facilities. There's gonna be three new catch basins installed as well as a subsurface stormwater management area that will treat the storm water. Uh, we're also proposing, uh, some new site lighting. There's gonna be three light posts. It's, it's, um, installed on the site as well as some building mounted fixtures. Uh, lighting plan has been submitted as part of the site plans as well as the, um, supplemental data, uh, data, uh, about the light fixtures and that type of thing. Let's see, what else we got? Um, so, as far as the existing buildings are gonna be renovated, the existing building at seven forty-six, seven forty-eight is gonna, um, receive a new, uh, facelift, the, the new front facade. Uh, let me see, I'm trying to share the architectural plans here. Uh, so that, should be able to see the front of the building, so presently, the building, uh, just a concrete block front, it sort of looks like the Alamo, the, the concrete block wall stick up above the roof line. Uh, the top of those concrete blocks are gonna be removed and a, a more conventional roof overhang is gonna project off the front of the building. Um, and again, the, the front of the building, there is existing stone treatment that's gonna be redone and, uh, you know, so we did have to get, uh, variance from the zoning board of appeals for that roof overhang off the front because the, uh, the building was built in nineteen forty-seven prior to zoning regulations. It's, um, didn't meet the setbacks, but we, we've received the variance for that roof, proposed roof overhang as well as a location approval of last week. Um, you know, we're asking you to accept the application tonight. We're not expecting action. We are still in, uh, the Lot Lines approval process. We're hoping maybe to have that wrapped up, uh, at the end of this month and, you know, perhaps in February, we be looking, uh, for approval from your commission and, you know, hopefully by that time, if there's any concerns or comments by staff or anyone else, we can address them by then. For the most part, so I have, if anyone has any specific questions, I can certainly get more detail. I know you haven't had a chance to look at the plans yet, so.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, anybody have any, any questions? If not, I guess we can, we can, uh, entertain a motion to accept the application. That's all we're doing this evening, correct?
That would be correct, sir.
I'd like to make a motion. Rob Ben Hagan?
Did you have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so carried. Thank you, we're all set.
Thank you.
Alright, um, number eleven, public comment. Any comment from the public? In that case, do we have any other business, or are we?
Mister Chairman, um, if you
Number twelve, yeah.
If you reason, um, if you, uh, when you adjourn for this, you do have remaining time. Um, if you wanted to go back and maybe do one more section of, um, the other workshop, it's, we have it scheduled that you went into a recess for that. Um, so it's a, at your discretion and your pleasure at this point.
Yeah, how, how's everybody feel? I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that if everybody else is, or we can delay, whatever. I'm completely flexible. How about you guys, the other commissioners?
Keith has his hand up.
Well, I'd, um, I'd rather hear from the commissioners. Um, if you're, I'm good as well. But, um, with Jim giving us that extent, kind of giving us an extension, uh, uh, all the way out till April or so, or even beyond. I think by, by, uh, mulling over this, what we just did, um, making any of the changes and going for the next meeting would be fine with me. Um, I don't mind any.
Keith, Keith, that wasn't, that wasn't, that wasn't like being kind and giving extensions or anything like that, so. I know you've, I know you've been sick. I know. I know you, I know you've been sick. I know you've been sick. So, uh, Yeah. Keith's been sick, uh, so if he's getting tired, we, we, we have to, my, he, uh, let him go, but, um, I think if we can meet that timeframe, guys, of, um, where we're looking at April for those public hearings, I, I think that's great. I think that, um, you know, as you guys are going through this with, uh, Keith's, uh, help. Um, unless you, unless any of the commissioners have any specific, uh, concerns of what you've covered so far. Um, I think we're doing well with this.
All right, so let's just hold it off till our next, uh, next month then. That'll give us enough time. Keith can get home and go to bed.
How you feeling?
Right over there.
Are you feeling better?
Yes, I, I am feeling better. Thank you. And it's right over there. I, I even have my, my partner here wants to, uh, wants me to join him.
I've, I've got, I've got two or three things, so I need you back in the, I need you back in Seymour so we can go over a couple of things.
You got it, Keith.
All right, well, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn for this evening.
Make a motion to adjourn?
And do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? If you're not, we are, we stand adjourned.
Great, I'm gonna go get a hot.
Yeah. We'll be over shortly. I will see y'all next month then.
All right. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.